Good evening, everyone. I will call this August 19th Board of Commissioners work session into order. And I just want to explain a few things. I only have a few people from the public here, but if you haven't been to a public meeting before, the Board of Commissioners work session, they are not open for public comment. They're just for us to discuss things as a board and listen to what the county staff has to present. And the public are always welcome at these meetings. This evening, we're having this one in an open meeting. It will be televised or at least available online on YouTube for people to see. So if anybody out there wants to see this video and understand a little bit more about adequate public facilities, that will be available to them. At this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Stackleather, our county manager, and he's got a little presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the time here in front of the board tonight. The purpose of this work session is in response to some comments and concerns that came about from a meeting that the school board had last week about redistricting at Moayak Elementary School. There were a lot of concerns. The enrollment for Moayak Elementary School has come in quite a bit above what is the historical norm. They've got a number of children. They typically had, they had quite a few more this summer as opposed to other summers. Normally, it stays around the 10 to 15 range. This summer, it was around 40 extra children that enrolled. And so we're going to walk through, first of all, the different approvals that come before this body, what you have to consider or not consider whenever you look to make a decision. And then we're going to go in some into our adequate public facilities and then specifically dive in on schools a little bit, just so that you all and the public in general have an idea of what the county has done to prepare for growth, how we project growth, and what options are available to you all as an elected body. So the first thing here is a chart that essentially breaks down. When you're talking about residential development in Currituck County, essentially, there are two ways that that can occur. One is through a rezoning, and one is through the approval of a use permit. Most major subdivisions come through the use permit phase at some point. The rezonings typically come around because the developer is trying to get a higher level of density than they have with the base zoning district. So as an example of that, if you have an ag zoning district, you might only have one unit per two acres. And if you go with a planned development, you can take it to two units per acre, to give you an idea. So it allows you to fit more lots on that property. The idea behind that is that planned developments typically are more thought out, they're more thoughtful, and maybe have more concerns for infrastructure within the community. They potentially have some kind of commercial component to it in order to help offset the increase in services that you'll see because of the increased density. So between these two different types of decisions, a rezoning can be turned down for subjective reasons. If you just have general concerns and say, "I don't think that this is a good fit for Currituck County," then a rezoning can be denied by the Board of Commissioners. A use permit is a quasi-judicial process, and so you have to have evidence that basically runs counter to certain facts that you all have to find to be in the affirmative. Kind of the flip side of that is if a use permit meets the specific findings, you all have a legal obligation to approve it. So if it meets those findings, in other words, the responsibility is on the applicant in the rezoning and on somebody else to present evidence that basically convinces you on a use permit that that's not the case. A rezoning can typically allow more homes than the current zoning district. Like I said, going from maybe an ag zoning to a public or planned development zoning district would allow you to add more lots, whereas a use permit cannot add more homes than the base zoning district allows. So a use permit can, it can make things more, it can make the rules stricter. It cannot loosen the rules, is a way to think of it. Can conditions be placed on approval? With residential rezonings, most of the ones that come before this board are conditional rezonings. And so you can, in fact, place conditions on there. The same is true with use permits. It needs to be discussed with the applicant, but you can place conditions on both of those processes. So if all of the findings and requirements are met, you can still turn down a rezoning, but you have to approve a use permit. The adequate public facilities is one of the findings that you all make with a use permit. So if a project comes through and it is deemed not to have adequate public facilities, you as a board, as a group of elected officials, if you feel like the case has not been made that adequate public facilities are available, then you are under an obligation to deny that use permit. In our ordinance, there is, there's language in there that because developments can sometimes take years to come to fruition, there is language in there that says that if a use permit is approved and it exceeds the adequate public facilities, that can only be done under the circumstance that within two years, a solution is going to be available.
So in other words, if we say, if we, once we use that, the clock is ticking, we have to have a solution in place within two years?
That's, that's not, no. What it's saying is that you can't approve it if there's no plan. But let's say we were under design for a school. So we know that within roughly two years, a school will be completed. Then you could approve the use permit even though the facility doesn't exist today. Because you have a reasonable expectation that within two years, from the approval of that use permit, it'll be there. But if we have no plan within a two-year window to approve something, this board's under an obligation to deny the use permit.
So technically, I'm sorry. So technically and historically, we've begun that process. I mean, as far as identifying land and, you know, we got the boards talking together. So legally, or, you know, per the ordinance, have we, in fact, started that process?
You, I believe that Currituck County has started the process to locate and construct a new elementary school at some point in the future. Do I think that it's within two-year timeframe? No, I do not. So.
I don't think we have a set piece of paper, some document stating that we have a two-year plan in place.
Just asking it for clarity.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, I'd agree.
And this same thing occurred back in the day, in the early 2000s. And that's when Jarvis Berg and Shawboro came on board. But it was on the south end of the county, not the north end of the county. So it's just kind of switched, which I know when I graduated from the high school, which is now Currituck Middle, when that opened, we had portable units. I went to portable units in middle school and high school, and I'm sure a lot of other people in this room did too.
And there are several ways, I think, that schools can handle capacity concerns. I mean, mobile units is one of those. Utilizing space inside of the school that maybe was used for other things. So in other words, an art classroom maybe becomes a first-grade classroom. And also, which is the discussion the school board had with parents in Moayak, is rezoning or redistricting, changing the boundary lines for where children go to school. But having said that, if you, if there is not an adequate public facility and there's not a plan to have that public facility within place within two years, staff is going to report to the board that they cannot meet that finding effect.
But that information you stated before, that has to be presented to us from the school board. We, I mean, they have to give you those numbers and those figures about classroom and what they can do in that with schools.
Yeah, I would, I'm going to go into a little bit on how we do all of that. But yes, I think that's the quickest way to say it. I think that this board has to look for the subject matter experts, which in this case for schools, is the school board and the administration over there to tell us when a school is at capacity. So and one of the things that was presented at the meeting last week is that the school capacity number that we've worked off of, which is 583, was given as the minimum number. I've had some discussions with the superintendent, and that is the number that he feels there's the potential that after you get beyond that, you start to have issues with, is there enough, is it adequate? You can still educate, but is it adequate? Having said that, the cleanest way would be for the school board to officially give us a number, you know, in a motion. But, but that's just one of the adequate public facilities. That's one thing I want to kind of talk through tonight. This focus is going to be schools towards the end, but there are a lot of different public facilities that you have to consider when you're thinking about what is an adequate public facility. So one of the, one of the concerns that, that we've heard is, okay, so what can the county control? You know, what is within the control of this board? The approval or denial of rezonings that allow higher density, that's something that comes before this board for residential purposes. The approval of use permits, which actually creates new lots typically. That's how subdivisions are approved here in Currituck County. One of the tools that you all have is the phasing of proposed residential developments. This is a really important tool for you all because, as we'll see later, the issue with the increase in students has occurred more because of the type of construction we're seeing in Moayak versus the number of lots that are just available. And I'll, I'll get into that a little further up when we get into the presentation. So, and the final thing is you all are the purse strings for the school system. So any funding that, that comes for new schools is going to flow through Currituck County. So that's the other piece that, and for any public, adequate public facility other than roads, which we'll get into that here in just a second. So real quick, what are those public facilities that we look at when we try to determine if, if, and not just residential developments, but if any development can, has adequate public facilities? For instance, if there was a major industry that decided to relocate here, we would have to evaluate whether fire service is something that, that we had available to be able to serve that industry. Residential development is where it comes forward for the most part. So schools is one, law enforcement, EMS services, fire services, water treatment, stormwater infrastructure, and roads has got question marks. It's something that we have to consider, but we have zero control over when roads are improved. So I think that whenever you all look at developments, you have to consider what is the carrying capacity of a road and is this going to put it over that? But you have no way to, to bring the solution to bear for something like that.
Well, let me ask you as, as a follow-on to that. I don't know that we are technically capable to determine as a board whether or not a road is adequate or not. And that's hence, we always bounce back to what is NC DOT saying?
So NC DOT, and, and staff is working through a couple of these things. With, in respect to roads, NC DOT gives roads grades. So they know that if you have a certain number of trips on a road, it's a grade A. You know, once you get over another number, it's a grade B. And the lower the grade, the more congestion you're going to have on that road. What we have to decide is are we happy with grade C roads or grade D roads? Because you use then the, the average daily trip count that DOT does for secondary roads. And you can compare that to where they've got the classification for the grades, and that will give you an idea of whether or not that road is at near or over the capacity at that grade level.
No. Several years ago, we explored having traffic analysis done. We put out a request for a proposal. And when it came back, every engineering firm that responded said, "Well, we depend on DOT to give us the numbers." So it was a new issue.
Yeah, I think, kind of, kind of like I said, with schools, for us, DOT is the subject matter expert. They provide numbers. It's up to us as a community to decide what grade of road we're comfortable with.
Yeah, but how do we? Okay, and that sounds great, but again, we're not traffic engineers. We don't know trip counts. We're not.
Trip counts are available. So we've got.
Okay, but, okay, I got that. But I'm suggesting, how do we know what a subdivision's going to do for a trip counter count? Or is it, it's a, I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm an engineer, but I'm not a civil engineer.
So we actually have that. Laurie presented that at our last meeting, what the trip count generation would be over the railroad tracks, right? You had a, that, what that?
From DOT.
Well, we do have a, what we call a trip generator. That's what we do for, it's a generalized number for different uses that essentially is a spreadsheet that, it's like an industry standard that we can use to estimate. So there are things that we do have.
So is it legally defendable?
Communities around the country use that industry standard as a way to, to estimate trip counts for various uses. For really large uses, this board could table a request and ask that they have their own study done. And that's something that you all as a group could require. If you feel like that, you know, you want more validity in that number. But the trip generator that Laurie's referring to is used in communities across the state. So then how do, how do we project whether we've got an adequate public facility? And how does that relate to growth? And when do we need to grow those facilities? So we use the past predictors to see how many widgets essentially a house will generate in our community. And then we use demographic data to project out either what the population increase could be if these homes are built, and how quickly those homes will come online. So for the past predictors, for instance, for fire, EMS, and law enforcement, we use 911 events. So what we're going to begin to do is take the 911 calls that come in, figure out how many are generated. You've got so many people per call. And so, you know, when you add that many people, you're going to generate another call. And so you can, from that, start to extrapolate out what that trend looks like going forward. Water, we've got a water model that essentially says, we know that the average home uses X number of gallons per day. We can model that out. Average daily trip counts from DOT. And then the, the school study, which I'll get into here in just a second, that tells us how many students each residential lot will typically produce in Currituck County.
And so to his point, to anyone out there that's listening to this or watches it later, you'll actually see that in our agenda packet going forward, what the generation of students is for each community. So for those of you that, that are interested and look at this, on the Board of Commissioners' agenda packet, you will see that information. It is, it is public information, and you can see exactly what we see.
It's public information too, I believe, on the 911 response times. I know our council's shares part now.
It is. We, what we'll try to do is we're going to start to integrate all of these facilities in some form or fashion into your, that first page of the staff report. So you all get a snapshot of what residential developments and what their impact will be to the services that Currituck County provides to its citizens. So how does the lack of adequate public facilities affect development? This is something that we got into just a second ago. This, what you see in italics is, is the actual verbiage from the code. But basically, if adequate public facilities are not available at the time of application, then staff would have to find that they are inadequate and it fails to meet that finding. And unless we have a plan to get something in place within two years, that use permit could not meet all of the findings of fact it has to meet to allow you all to approve So to get to the issue with Moayak Elementary School in particular, I wanted to break down how we project school growth, some of the changes that we've seen in our community, specifically in the Moayak area, and talk about how we got to where we're at. The first thing to notice, and I know you can't read the numbers, but you'll, you'll understand graphically. If you look at the top bar graph, the blue column are the number of homes that have been CO'd in Moayak. So these are new homes in Moayak. The, as you can see, the far right blue line, the second tallest one, is through August 13th of 2019. So that is not a full calendar year. Going back, all of the other groupings are full calendar years. So the blue, the tallest blue line is how many new residential homes were CO'd in Moayak in 2018. So in 2018, there were 171 homes CO'd in the Moayak township. In 2019, if we say that the trend will continue what we've seen this year, we expect 199 homes to be CO'd in Moayak for the calendar year of 2019. The issue with that, and the reason that you've seen an increase in Moayak, in my opinion, it's based on the fact that the type of builders there are very different than you've had in previous years. Previously, you had custom homes. So essentially, somebody finds a contractor, they, they sign a contract, contractor puts the house up. You now have, in the industry, what are track homes. So it's as close as you can come as an onsite production line for homes. There are certain builders in our community now that can take a home from, it has not begun until CO, and it takes 52 days, which is much faster than any homes that could be built by a custom home builder typically. So you're seeing the market absorb more homes than it's ever absorbed before. One is because there are willing buyers. The economy is good, and the next chart will show you that that's the trend in general across all of Currituck County. But the other issue is that the type of construction that's occurring in Currituck County is much more common in suburban areas next to metropolitan communities. So these type of large track home builders. So essentially, what you do is you go in, you pick three or four features, but the crew is building the same house over and over and over and over and over. It's a, it's a factory line to, to put houses up. So this is just the, the growth trend for building permits countywide that you've seen. I went back to capture the recession. So as you can see, 2006 was, 2017 and 2006 were on track with each other. Those were not a surprise. 2018 actually tracked above. The interesting thing is if you take the current data, we probably will see a little downtick countywide, but you will see an increase in Moayak. So what you're going to see is, for instance, the Crawford Township had a lot more homes last year than this year. Part of that is Laurel Woods. You know, you had a large subdivision in Crawford that built out relatively quickly. Whereas in Moayak, you've got more lots available. So you'll see that, that trend continue in Moayak, even if countywide, the numbers dip off just a little bit. So then how does Currituck County predict how many students are going to come from each home? And this is a question that, that came up several times at the meeting. Were we caught off guard by the number? Basically, we had a study done in 2004 called the Tischler Study, which states that each residential home in Currituck County will generate .47 students. And then it breaks it down by the different schools that they would attend. So essentially, every rooftop that comes in is going to generate a quarter of an elementary student. That's, you know, the general rule of thumb. The, we check the validity each year to see if it's close countywide and in the different regions. The region for Moayak is the Central Shawboro Moayak Elementary Schools. They're all grouped together. And we checked the validity in those groups, and it checked close. The validity was .515 versus .47. So it wasn't way out of whack. The issue wasn't that there's more kids going into houses in that area. The issue is there's more houses being CO'd in that area. It's the rate at which the homes are being brought into the market. So the study, like I said, the study seems like the numbers are still very valid.
Do you think there's a difference with the students in a custom-built home and what you call a track home? Has there any study been done about that? Because I used to hear that most of the people coming to Currituck were older, retired people.
I think that the, the trend is still about the same from one to the other. In track homes, a lot of times, you'll see retirees choose those for a couple of reasons. One, they're typically are denser. Most of those, most track home developers aren't going to build on acre lots, and so retired individuals don't mind. They'd much rather have a quarter-acre lot. You know, they don't have kids, they don't need the yard for them to run around and that kind of thing. So I don't know that that has an impact on it that much. I think that, I think that you're just seeing more homes CO'd more rapidly than you've ever had here. And I think that, I'm giving you all the statistics, but all you really have to do is drive up and down 168, and you, it just feels that way. I mean, you go drive Lakeview, which is a track home development, and you will see very quickly that those homes go up at a very rapid rate. I mean, if you don't go through Moayak but once a month, you'll see new rooftops every time you go through there. So, and I can give you the anecdotal as well, but statistically, it seems like the numbers hold out that each home produces, and Currituck County produces a quarter of an elementary school student. So we know that Moayak Elementary School saw an uptick. I think that, and staff agrees, that it's because of the, the amount of homes that are being constructed in that area and the rate at which they're being constructed. So then the question that came up at the meeting with the school board, at least from the, from the public, and the school board are not necessarily the group to answer this, what is Currituck County doing about the rapid growth in school enrollment in Moayak Elementary School? So what are some things that we are doing? We've set aside funds for years for new school construction. Now, we can't set aside the full amount in a year. We've tackled it a little bit at a time. We have funds that have been saved up. Now, some of those funds, when there's an emergency at the school, have to be spent. For instance, we had the masonry repair that we had to do to the middle school. You know, that comes out of those funds. But by and large, we try to leave that pot of money untouched. There's a small group from each board that's begun looking at site selection for a new elementary school in the Moayak area.
I think that's important to hit on. Commissioner Beaumont said something to it. We, there seems to be a general feeling that, you know, that we're not prepared or whatever, and, and nothing can be further from the truth. In the last couple of years, both boards have met several times. We've, we've fostered probably a better relationship than we've seen in a long time between the two boards, and recognizing that, yes, we're going to have to build a, a new school sooner than later. And in that process, we've sat down with two commissioners and two Board of Education members, county manager and the school superintendent, to begin the site selection process. So I think it's important for everyone to understand that we, as commissioners and the school board, recognize what's going on, and we are working towards fixing that problem and not having a near-jerk reaction to do it, to do it the right way and be prudent with taxpayer dollars.
Well, the other thing is through site selection, we're trying to be methodical about that. Throughout years, properties come to the county and say, "Hey, you should put a school here." What we're doing is trying to figure out what the criteria are that make sense for the school system, identify those properties, and then see if we have any willing sellers in that group. So we expect to have a, a list of properties to the, that joint group sometime in the next week or so. We're going to have a meeting, and so hopefully, that'll continue to move forward. One thing I do want to, to state to this group, just because we secure land doesn't mean that we immediately jump into the design of a new elementary school, and I'll get into that. But the other really tough question, and one that's hard to get your, to wrap your hands around, is at what point do you want a new school to open? Because you can't open a new school when the old school is one student over capacity. And, and I'll get into the reasons for that here in just a second. But so that's the other part of it that's, that really you have to think about. The other thing that Currituck County has done in order to prepare for new students is we did adopt UDO language that allows the disapproval of the use permits if they do not meet adequate public facilities. So that once we get to a certain point, you can start to phase developments, you can, you can reject them if they don't have adequate public facilities. There's a lot of tools that you all have to be able to, to slow it down a little bit if we feel like that it's getting out of control. So then I spoke, this is the really complicated question. And this is really at the heart of the conversation that the Board of Education had with their parents last week. The North Carolina Department of Instruction, of Public Instruction, will only fund administrative positions after you have a certain number of students. So they're not going to pay for a new principal, they're not going to pay for, for the, all the other staff that goes into a school until you've got a certain number of kids ready to put in that school. And if we build a school before DPI says that we should, the tax burden on the citizens goes way up. So you don't want to build it too soon. You also don't want to build it too late, so that the educational component for the students here is suffering. In a lot of communities, they try to find a sweet spot between having half of the student population ready to move into the new school, and then when that happens, having roughly 80%, or 20% capacity available in the schools that you pulled from. And so that means that you've got now room that when new developments come in, these schools aren't immediately overcrowded again, but you've got enough basically to seed the new school, because you've got to have enough kids there for it to make sense. As we've looked through those numbers, staff would recommend an elementary school open sometime in August of 2023. It's about a two-year window from beginning design until the completion of a school. I will tell you that that number has been much later at presentations made to this board prior to this year. But the fact is, the rate at which development's occurring and the rate at which homes are being built, it's going to come quicker.
Unless it slows.
Even if it slows at this point, it's going to be tough for the first elementary school. Because if Moayak Elementary, so if you look at the chart below, Shawboro and Central have some space available. They combine those together, and they have roughly 24 new kids every summer that come in. That's what they generate in new children.
And that's with the existing lines.
Boundary lines.
And if you look at what Moayak added, which was, I think, 54 this year.
I think, it's not quite that many. I think it's at 50 right now.
Okay, so that 50 plus 24, 24 is enough, is basically 100 students.
Yeah.
A year.
Yeah, so you're taking.
That right there looks at me like one year.
Yeah, so at one year, you're at capacity in all of those schools.
All three schools.
I will tell you that that number has been much later at presentations made to this board prior to this year, but the fact is, the rate at which development's occurring and the rate at which homes are being built, it's going to come quicker.
Unless it slows.
Even if it slows at this point, it's going to be tough for the first elementary school. Because if Moyoc Elementary, so if you look at the chart below, Shawboro and Central have some space available. They combine those together and they have roughly 24 new kids every summer that come in. That's what they generate in new children.
And that's with the existing lines.
Boundary lines.
And if you look at what Moyoc added, which was, I think, 54 this year.
I think, it's not quite that many. I think it's at 50 right now.
Okay, so that 50 plus 24, 24 is enough, is basically 100 students.
Yeah.
A year.
Yeah, so you're taking.
That right there looks at me like one year.
Yeah, so at one year, you're at capacity in all of those schools.
All three schools.
If you redid the lines, the next year, you've got to bring in mobile units in order to provide additional classrooms, or you've got to.
The school system has to bring in.
Correct, not us, sorry. The school system has to make a decision, are they going to use mobile classrooms? Are they going to turn space that is currently dedicated to something else into a classroom? That's essentially what it, what it comes down to. And that, go ahead.
I'm sorry, not that it matters. What's the availability at, if we even have that? What's the availability at Griggs? I know there's four, I don't know, five or six empty classrooms in Jarvisburg.
I don't, you know, we set them, we set them apart, I don't know the numbers, but Jarvisburg and Griggs have ample capacity.
I just was curious.
Yeah, I don't know what the number is off the top of my head, but it's ample. I mean, they've, the growth concern in, in lower Currituck is not the concern that it is up county, basically.
So in the Moyoc area, maybe Laurie, you know this, how much, how much development is still yet to be, I mean, my point is, is we've, we've got a lot of developments that have been approved that haven't been built up yet.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and when those houses go up, you don't know how much children's going to add to it, so we might be.
Well, we, we track how many kids, the, basically the, the paper kids are going to add, but I'll let Laurie speak to how many lots we currently have existing in the, the northern school area is what it'll be.
For, in the northern school area, we still have 1,464 lots remaining in all the major subdivisions that have been, been approved since 1994, since this Adequate Public Facilities ordinance was put into place. So nearly 1,500 vacant lots.
So right there, these things start building up and people moving in, boom, we don't even have to approve new developments and we're already busting at the seams right there.
You, you all will build a new elementary, if you don't approve the first lot going forward, you're building a new elementary school.
It's happening either way.
Yeah, it's just how quickly those lots are absorbed into the market, which is happening at a rate that Currituck County has never seen.
It's tough to be a place people want to live.
Well, you have a good quality of life, which, you know, attracts people, but with that comes the challenges of growth. Laurie hit on something I think is really important for folks to understand, and, and I think this is right, and Currituck County, I believe, was the first county in North Carolina to put adequate public facilities language in place. So Currituck County has been on the forefront of trying to get its hands around what development. I mean, it wasn't Charlotte, it wasn't Wake County, it wasn't Mecklenburg County, it was Currituck County. So I think that this board historically, I mean, for, gosh, the last 20-plus years, has understood that development puts pressure on infrastructure. The, like I said, you have to make assumptions as you project it out, and sometimes those assumptions change. And the difference now is we've got a different kind of home builder in Currituck County, so.
And that Adequate Public Facilities ordinance has made sure that we stayed ahead of our infrastructure needs.
Mm-hmm. And I think it's, and I know that folks, I know that folks at the meeting last week with the school board, some of the parents there would, would argue with me, and I understand why they would. I still think that we are taking a well-thought-out approach to our adequate public facilities. Like I said, the tough part is we can't build a school when you've only got 30 kids to put in it. We have to wait until we've got enough children in order to, to have DPI cover the cost of administering that school. And so you can't, I know people, people at the meeting said, well, we should already have an elementary school open because we're at capacity in Moyoc. But as we've talked about tonight, there's, there's, there's options available to the school board that they can use to alleviate some of that, that they haven't done yet, they could do in the future, but we have to be mindful of when we open the new school. But now we are constantly, and you all know this, just since I've been here, we are constantly looking at the numbers and making sure that we're still where we need to be, and, and we move it. I mean, we don't beat around the bush. If we think it's, it's sped up, it's sped up, and it has sped up just since I've been here.
Well, and, and again, I mean, Kevin, some people grew up Owen, all, the county, even when I was in school here, when the need arose, the county has always built the schools when they were needed, and it worked out fine over the years, and it's going to work out fine going forward. And you're right, there's been some temporary schools put in while it's being done, but I mean, it's, it's.
That's a normal progression.
It's just not, and it's always been that way, and it's, and we're always going to get there.
But it doesn't matter where you live, you're going to see that, I mean.
And so to, to Commissioner Beaumont's point, yeah, I mean Shaw, so the number, the numbers you see up here are numbers that we've used since 2014. These are numbers that were provided to us by this, by Sandy Kinsel, who was with the school system in 2014. The number that, that we were provided by them at that point was 583. So if you put Moyoc up there, that's the number that we would put up. However, the school system is evaluating where that number is for them, and we need for them to get with us to tell us what is their adequate public facility number for schools. Like I said, we, we have to depend on the subject matter experts, and in this case, it's, it's the school board and the school system that is that subject matter expert.
And, and I was at Monday night's meeting, and I think part of the confusion I know that I had coming away from it was, we heard capacity numbers that was, was the first time I'd ever heard a number, and I want to say 638 or something like that.
638.
And so, you know, that's not the venue that you want to hear that. We need to get the right, right number, and I'm sure that we'll get that.
Yeah, I believe we will. I think some of the confusion there comes from the fact that they can get to that number, but to do that, they have to take all available space that's currently programmed for other uses and convert it into classrooms. So computer labs, things like that. And that's, like I said, I don't want to, I think it's important for a positive relationship between the Board of Commissioners and the school board, for us to, to understand that they are the school subject matter experts, we are the funding mechanism, and it's our job to think about the infrastructure and the funding. It's their job to figure out how they're going to adequately educate our children. And so when they, I mean, and to speak to that point, when the superintendent brought numbers lower than what we currently use in May, I think it was, maybe April, staff had no, I mean, we accepted those numbers, they were based on the fact that state legislation was changing, it was going to lower class sizes, we didn't push back against those. Now, if we feel like that numbers, we start to have concern about where they came from, sure, we're going to ask questions, but in that case, they could back up the lower numbers. And once the legislation is in place and fully in effect, the numbers that you see up there, if we're even Shawboro and Central, will not be accurate. So it'll be less than what you see up there.
Moving target, basically.
Until the legislation's fully in place, it really is. But from here forward, it'll be a downward slope. The capacity will only get smaller from what it currently is today.
Right. I think for support, for those who maybe are new to Currituck or maybe new to North Carolina, K-33 class sizes have been affected by the state, and that's what Mr. Stichler is talking about, is the reduction of classroom size is being phased in over a number of years. And, and some of the numbers we're looking at are actually those numbers projecting forward, not right now.
When the reason that those numbers have been, just for historical purposes, the reason those numbers are being phased in is that for Currituck County, those numbers might not, those numbers alone would not have necessitated a new school. But if you're Wake County, and, and you've got, you know, hundreds of elementary schools, well, you've got to build three or four new schools just to be able to meet the statute. So they did that in, in response to populated counties, knowing that they were looking at multimillion-dollar investments just to be able to meet that requirement, so.
And as a point of clarity, the staff recommendation of August of 2023, that is incorporating the reduced class sizes K-33, correct?
That's, that's incorporating the reduced class sizes when the legislation is fully in effect.
Okay, so, and is that predicated on the, the 19 students per classroom or the 19 plus the three?
It's, let's see, it's 19 in kindergarten, and I'm going to try to get this right, it's 18 in first grade, and I believe 17 in second and third grade, but I might have one of those off by one.
But that's not with the, the plus three or the whatever.
Correct. That's not with the plus, because.
Okay, so that's, that's the most conservative number, is the ones that are based in that.
Correct.
And I, and I think that's an appropriate methodology.
Yeah. So, so then finally, the other thing that, that we heard a lot, and this is just something that, that I want to speak to briefly, and this is more for the, the, the public who might be in attendance or who is watching, people were kind of questioning, why would you approve more lots if you know that this is an issue, and there were conversations about, they just want the tax base? Well, residential tax base does not pay for itself. Residential homes are a bad tax base investment, plain and simple. Because of the services you have to provide, education being a large one, but fire, EMS, law enforcement, all of those things mean that residential development to pay for itself in Currituck County probably needs to be valued somewhere between $400 and $450,000. And it, yeah, it's probably, it could be higher than that, but yeah, I mean, yeah. So why would you approve more lots? That's kind of the question that I've heard, that we heard just in conversations around that meeting. Well, when it does encourage commercial tax growth, which is really how a community can start to do new things and invest in different programs and provide higher levels of services, it's, but to get the commercial growth, you do have to have some residential growth. I think we're at the verge of seeing some of that happen. The other thing, and I think this is a really nuanced discussion that people don't think about, is that there's an ideal here about the protection of property rights. And so if I have owned land, even if I haven't owned it my whole life, I've just owned it for a little while, there is an ideal that says that I should have some expectation to be able to use that land to my benefit, whether it's as a farmer, whether it's to put subdivisions on it, whether it's to develop it commercially, if that makes sense for the community. And so I think that it's, that's the other reason that people don't always think about whenever they question, why does a county let more growth occur? And I think that especially in a, in a county like Currituck County, that's a really important idea to, to folks, you know, that you should have some say in what you're able to do with your land. On the flip side, why would you deny more residential lots? You know, obviously, there's the, the failure for those residential lots to meet adopted plans and policies. Maybe that's education policies, maybe it's that they don't encourage the kind of growth that you all want to see. It can create a need to increase taxes for services. If you don't have the commercial growth that comes in with the residential growth, the only way you're going to pay for that is an increase in the tax rate, because the tax base is not going to keep up. And so obviously, that's something that, that no, that no responsible elected body wants to move towards quicker if they can help it. And then finally, is the protection of community character. I think this is one you hear a lot here, and you hear it said rural character, but I mean, it's just, what is Currituck County? What does it mean? How do people view it? And, and protecting that from overdevelopment. I think that's, those are kind of, to sum up, not just here, but in other places, those are the reasons you typically see for, for lots being approved and lots being disapproved. And that's essentially the end of the presentation that I have about adequate public facilities and, and the rezoning use permit process, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that anybody has.
And let me, Commissioner McCord was speaking to the Lower Currituck, Jarvisburg, and Griggs Elementary School. We're at 65% capacity in those, combined those two schools.
Thank you. Yeah, like I said, what, 15, 20 years ago, those are the ones that were before Jarvisburg Griggs was overpopulated and portable units all over the place, so.
Anything further? Well, I think, I think it's important that the public understand that this board in particular and previous boards really work hard to adequately understand how many neighborhoods are coming in, what the impact of those are, and, and while trying to preserve the, the character of Currituck County. All of us live here, we all want to see it develop appropriately and, and keep some of that character behind it. As I said, we're working very hard with the school board to, to move us forward, to understand when that time comes, and as we said, about 2023 is when that'll happen, and, and we hope that relationship continues. I mean, there's some good folks over there, and, and there's a lot of interaction happening right now between those two boards that, that definitely was not happening when I came on here two and a half years ago. I think it'd been quite some time, maybe over a year before those two boards actually had talked to each other. So we have taken big strides, maybe longer now. No, we were, this board, two and a half years ago. Prior to that, it'd have been sometime, right? Whether, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject, one other thing that I forgot to say, I said that the county has saved up money, and we do have some money, I mean, a substantial amount in fund balance to be able to put towards a new school. The other thing, in the current state budget that's been vetoed by the governor, if it ever does get approved, Representative Hanneck did put approximately $11 million of school construction money in that budget. So there is money coming that can, can help offset the cost of that new school, which is one of the reasons that I feel pretty confident that we'll be able to move that project forward, that project forward without any major increase to, to tax rates.
Is that 11 million for Currituck?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes. And there was some money in there also for the College of the Albemarle Currituck Facility, but specifically for Currituck County schools, it was $11 million in capital money. So I mean, that's, that's something that we should be very grateful for, and hopefully that budget will be approved soon.
The other thing, the other thing I'd like to add too, like a lot of times I hear out in Moyoc area or whatever, we have two high schools in Currituck County, and people, a lot of people don't know that if they're watching TV or whatever. We have NAP, which is an early college, but it's a high school, which I think their full capacity for that is three-something, and there's two seven.
I think it's 300, they're capped at 300.
Yeah.
Flat, yeah.
And I think they're at 267 or something this year. I asked Ms. Fallon, the principal, last week.
With, with the high schools, and this is a conversation that obviously will have to come down the road, high school capacities aren't, aren't close right now. As these students that are increasing our elementary schools matriculate up into high school, it'll mean that we'll have to look at capacities. But there's a plan in place that would expand the current high school. The, the building was designed to be able to expand, which is much more cost-effective and definitely saves a tax rate increase versus trying to build a whole high school from scratch, so.
And for the folks in Currituck, what do the schools typically run today for construction costs?
If you built a elementary school today, it's going to cost you $22 million. If you're going to build a middle school, it's around 25, and a high school's, depending on the facility, somewhere between 50 and 70. I know that's a big range, but it depends on the size of the high school. So quite a bit.
Nice football field.
Quite a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you can coach again.
A high school, a new high school would be the single largest investment that Currituck County would ever make. That's why I think the expansion is a better way forward. But like I said, you're talking about something that'll occur.
A decade.
Hopefully a decade from now, so.
Okay. Anything further from the board? All right, well, I'll close this work session, thank you all for all your thoughts.